Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the special meeting of our Delray City Council. It's Thursday, November 8th, 6 o'clock. If you have a phone call, please.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Lutell.
Here.
Councilmember Petal.
Here.
Vice Mayor Court.
Here.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to vary the new schedule this evening. Our special guest, Mr. Sherry Damon, at the Ford Reuse Authority, not very yet, he's caught in traffic. So what we'll start off with is under New Business 3B, which has approved the attached comment letter. It's a bit more than half the plan and draft environmental impact report. City manager, he's the...
Thank you, Mayor. The item for you tonight is to approve a city comment letter on the draft environmental impact report for the Monterey Regional Airport's proposed airport master plan project. The airport published its draft environmental impact report in early October. The city planning staff have reviewed the document, prepared the attached draft comment letter for council consideration. Public comment is due to the airport no later than tomorrow, so council's action tonight will allow us to submit the comment letter prior to the deadline. The letter makes clear that the city is opposed to the proposed project and alternative one due to inconsistency with the city's general plan, as well as impact, significant impacts to regional traffic in the city, noise, and other environmental impacts. The city understands and acknowledges that the airport needs to develop and be safe and provide for air service, and so the city's letter supports alternative two in the master plan, which has no road on the north side through Delray Oaks, or rather funnels any additional traffic through, primarily through the city of Monterey, through Casanova, which is how traffic currently gets to the north side if it would be extended up farther. So pending your questions and comments on the comment letter, I can do my...
Any questions or comments about members of the council?
Yes, council member. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address a couple of things. First of all, there's a great deal of misperception out there about the meetings that were held, where myself and the vice mayor participated with the airport board members, a few of them there, committee. There were no, there was no plans made that we were privy to, other than their general idea of what their plan is. And so we were provided that information, that it was totally inappropriate, totally inappropriate, for us to bring that to any kind of a city council meeting, present the citizens of Delray Oaks until their environmental impact report was released. And in addition, I'm going to emphasize that we made them very much aware of what the city's general plan is. They were, some of them were aware of it, but we told them that there is no room in there for a road through the north side, through Delray Oaks to the north side of the airport. All that said, they, they had five, I think it was five different access points that they were looking at for how to get to the north side of the airport. Now, we have great sympathy with their efforts to try and develop that piece of property over there. The airport needs revenue, just like any other organism needs revenue. So they've got a great deal of unused land over there. And if you're aware of things at all, you know that the people that live over in Monterey, on that side of the airport, they don't want traffic in their area either. Nobody wants traffic in your neighborhood. So the airport, I think, came up with what seemed to them to be a very reasonable position. But I got to tell you, we did not have anything to present to you until the actual report came out that this is what our plan is. So some of the innuendo and so on out there about people making backdoor deals and people making comments about my honesty and Kristen Clark's honesty is shocking. It tells me that people don't understand the processes. And it's very, very disconcerting, obvious adwords, but disconcerting to hear that kind of stuff going around behind my back, in some cases right to my face. So I'm very disturbed that the honest efforts on the part of your representatives to represent you and convey your concerns to the airport seem to have been twisted entirely around and sounded like we were making deals behind your back. Nothing could be further than the truth. This is the first time that this item has come since, what, eight or 10 years ago they have the airport here, and the family manager of the airport left in disgust because of the way he was being treated. So let's try and be civil, folks. Let's just try and be civil and listen to these things. Nobody's made up their mind about this, other than we have just been out tonight, and we know that this too, because tonight we are reading what the city has responded, what is in the, Monterey Herald, we're not agreeing with the airport's plan. So I think I've said enough. I'm very, I'm calming down on this, but I'm very upset about the things that are just not true.
Dennis, thank you, Mayor Rollins. Any other comments about members of the, yes.
Dennis, I agree with Dennis, and Dennis has pretty much said it all. So I hope everybody takes it to heart, and I hope everybody knows what they are saying before they put it out on social media.
Other comments by members of the council? Not to the public, any comments by members of the public? Same thing back to the council, I entertain a motion, directing myself to sign a sentence later to the airport, express my opposition on the EIR.
Second.
You have a motion?
Second.
On the papers, it is a long signed "I".
Aye.
Anybody who votes, motion period, and actually, thank you very much, council. We have our star person right now, Ms. Sherry Damon Esquider. We'll go back to 3A right now, considering, actually, the presentation by the Ford Reuse Authority Transition Master Plan. I'm a member of the four board of directors, a most executive, that's around the, what's going on over there. Nano Pick is a member, one of the key members to be demonstrated today. Ms. Sherry Damon is the key member for the transition plan, who's worked for the last two years. I've worked in for on the foreign transition team for two solid years. And so this plan has gone back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. What you see right now is a proposal, basically, that we hope to be approved tomorrow as a framework. It's not a final decision, but we have to be humorous agreements between this city, city of Monterey, city of Monterey County, Seaside, and so forth, but it's an attempt to get things going. Tomorrow at the 4B at 2:00, will be two other counter proposals discussed, and it'll be usual for interesting periods, to say the least. Ms. Sherry Damon, she's been terrible, she's smart, she's a compromiser between the four actions, probably an impossible task, I think you could say. So basically, going there today, I asked Sherry if it was possible to present this for Raven this evening, while at the same time leading us to Pilates exercises. She's also Pilates professional instructor. She didn't try for some reason, so, so basically, Sherry, it's all yours. Thank you for coming out, and we hope Mike doesn't feel that. I know this is...
Okay, good. I apologize, Mayor, members of the council, Sherry Damon, apologize for our executive officer being so ill and all that. Get home because I'm giving him a ride, and then all this sick germs in my car, something meh, get out of here, go home. We have a four board meeting tomorrow, and I need to welcome them. So, and it looks like we're having some technical difficulty on top of that, just to make or take our little projector for PowerPoint isn't working. So the third PowerPoint, I think everybody has handouts, yeah?
I guess they don't, they're out there.
Right. So, you know, just to set the stage, because some of you may or may not remember when the base closed and the four board re-use authority was set up, and it was a big deal. It was set up because four board was seen as a regional asset. There were competing views on what to do with the property out there, and the idea was that, as a region, we should figure out what we're going to do with that property, come up with a plan, and integrate that plan so that you don't have Delray Oaks fighting the city of Marina, fighting the city of Seaside, fighting the county of Monterey, about letting the city go where. It happens a lot in jurisdictions where you're competing, you know, one city is competing for the super duper targets, if that's what you want in the jurisdiction. And I think it brings sales tax revenues to your jurisdiction. So the idea was, it's a regional asset, it's disturbing, it's got affordable housing to go, it's where we can check a lot of swat, the swats of habitat, it brought a lot to the table. So that's how we got to four. And so four proceeded to prepare a plan, it sets aside 17,000, almost 18,000 acres of habitat, and integrated across the base so that you could go from, all the way from Marina, all the way across the base. And just for size and scope, the size of four is the size of the city and county of San Francisco. So that's what we're talking about, think about that, when you're, when you're sitting out there. And two-thirds of that is in the habitat right now. So, and in order to preserve all that habitat, you've got to have something to pay for it. That is focused on the backup development, and you might hear a lot about the community facilities district, so four did a plan, adopted a special tax to raise the money from development that would go in, in this very concentrated area of the base, as each jurisdiction includes those developments, in order to gather fees to pay for not just the habitat, but the dilapidated road structure, bringing that up to speed, the water infrastructure, the internet. You know, all things that have happened, and even to this day, Delray Oaks is on the very end of that. We have not received yet their water infrastructure, or all the roadways that were supposed to go into the town of Delray Oaks. So, like everything, ask for 23 years later, four has died of one of our successes. We have put in transportation transit measures, and a lot of them, $74 million injected into the community. You know, the stoplights on Highway 218, the connection with Ryan Ranch and South Valley Road, those are all things that four built, and you don't hear about that in the press sometimes. So there's, four is not a regional player, we don't cooperate. Has anybody driven from Salinas to Monterey during rush hour and taken into Jim Parkway? You know, that four-laneing? That's all a project that four put in. Second Avenue, where you take the cutoff and then you go down Light Fighter, and then you come across General Jim because you don't want to sit in traffic on Highway 1? Those are all roads that four built. So it's not really not fair to say now, 23 years later, that four has not been a team player or regional player. Also, stormwater drainage, those outfalls due to the ocean got removed, improving the Monterey Bay sanctuary. We got firefighting equipment, we re-cultivated water wells, we proceeded to clean up the base in conjunction with the army, so removing the munitions and explosives that are concerned. It's state of the art. Local folks don't realize, this area is a, is a, it's a torch, it's a little light. Our light is shining bright in four order. It's a one of a kind, and it's created the infrastructure, the process, the procedure for the collaboration to transition bases. And this model is being replicated across the state of San Diego. It is, you know, it's an incredible thing, when you go to Washington and Monterey County is on the map, four order is on the map. The process that four uses is on the map. So how many houses, you hear about that? 6160, it's a growth cap, it's not even a growth plan, it's a replacement of military jobs and houses and population that appear when the military is in full swing. So you're worried about that 6160 cap. Four has approved a system of about 4,000 units of housing already. We only see about 1,000 or over 1,000 on the ground today, but 4,000 are ready to go as soon as the economy and as soon as those developers are ready to pull the permits and go. So that can get, the waters when allocated to those projects, they can go. Retail, we've approved 2.54 million square feet entitled area, and 400,000 BOS with your initiative and your RVs or park. Building removal, 3,500 buildings, and 1,900 of them removed. Only 17% of those buildings are left on the floor to get. And we've got two building removal projects going right now, one in the city of Seaside to remove those old surplus two concrete buildings. So four has been putting money in, it's about 121 million or more into the economy, into those projects, into bringing the infrastructure up, so that you can actually use the base. So moving right along, unfortunately, we're not done. It's a big job. There are road projects that are left to do, there's water augmentation, if anything necessary, and habitat management. How do you fund protection of that 17,000, 15,000 acre swath of land? And that's a pricey endeavor, hasn't been fully decided, but in our capital improvement program, that's where we get these numbers. It's about $194 million when four has legislated the sunset upon June 30th, 2020. And that's assuming you do everything, you build all the roads that are in capital improvement program, you build the six roads or so that four is charged with building that nobody else wanted to build. One of those is South Valley, by the way, because it's in an area of munitions and explosives where there was cleanup. You get the ranges, it's seen as a risky project because you're moving dirt. Nobody really wanted to take that long. Four got it, so we're doing it. But it also comes with litigation, so there are lawsuits, they're hand in hand with all that. It's not an easy task, and there are a few more roads that have to be finished. We have the environmental cleanup program, which it doesn't complete until 2028. Most of the regulatory cleanup is done, that's the great news, but there's still a process where you verify, trust that verify. I trust that I cleaned it out, but you know, as you go in and you dig up the dirt, and you find something, uh-oh, what happens next? That's part of the S-ET program, that's part of what four does, and the plans and procedures that four has been working on to try to protect the safety of everybody that's been forward in the process. So how does four fund all this? Well, one of the, it's a three-legged stool, actually, it's a four-legged stool, but the three primary sources of revenue are community facilities district fee, which is kind of like a development fee, that's what people do when you go pull your permit, you pay the fee, and then get your permit. So that's a community facilities district, it's actually a special tax technically. We use property sales, land sales revenues from projects that aren't signed. Four has a special state authorization that gives 50% of the land sales revenues to four to complete the property. And 50% goes back to the land use jurisdiction to do whatever the land use jurisdiction wants to do with those revenues. And it's not always, I think of property in Monterey County as expensive property. Property on four order is a superfund site, it's contaminated, it has buildings that have to be removed. So the property values don't quite translate in the same way that if I were buying a lot, already finished a lot in Delray Oaks, I would be paying, I don't know, 500, 600, depending on if there's water, $700,000. I don't know what the actual value is, but the idea is, it's not quite the same. And then we use property tax revenues. Property tax revenues, kind of like when redevelopment, we keep 24% of every dollar that comes in, and that gets to go back into the re-use program. And currently, that's averaging about a little over $2 million into improvements. As we move forward and projects develop, that number is projected to the left, so that over the next 10 years, that number is estimated to be $66 million that can go in that retiring that $194 million projected cost. So if you extend it forward, that's how you would be generating the revenue. And then, fourth piece, our grants, you know, we are very lucky in this four that has special state and federal designations that qualifies for federal grants, and that's the other place where four contains revenues. So in 2016 and in 2017, four board heard almost the same information that I just summarized for you, and said, higher than $94 million, you got a community facilities district in play. You know what? Should just extend four and keep that financing in play, so that we don't have the issue of collecting revenues from projects that are approved. So there's a land use rule that says, you approve a project, you don't have to pay fees, brand new fees, to get put in play. So when the four fee goes away, when four goes away in 2020, those fees go away. So that 4,000, those 4,000 units I was talking about, they wouldn't pay a tax, because the four tax goes away. So you have to have a replacement mechanism to do that. And the four board's hey, this is a no-brainer, let's extend four, extend that tax, because that's a $72 million cost to the community, plus or minus. $72 million revenues generated is the estimated amount. In 2017, they said, okay, yeah, well, we might not need to extend four, but we want one single entity, let's do land use jurisdictions, but you know what, that community facilities district, that financing is still really, really important. We do need legislation for that. So please give us that decision. So that's what they're doing, trying to get one entity to finish the program and get the financing in play. That's what the four board said in 2016 and 2017. Now we're in a different phase. We are trying to transition, which is what the state legislature said. State legislature said, on June 30th, 2020, you are gone, four, and 18 months, a year and a half before you go, you're required to create a plan that addresses your assets, your liabilities, and what's left for you to do, your scheduled obligations. And that's where we are today. And it also said, LaFco, you're supposed to, once four board, you can do this plan, LaFco, you implement that plan. And there's, as you can imagine, lots of disagreements about how you do that. And there's no roadmap for how you do that. So we created, and the staff and the board has been considering the transition plan resolution that the governor's referring to, and it has a whole bunch of different things. But essentially, it makes some findings about what they want, what the board wants to accomplish, it assigns the assets, the liabilities, the obligations, it has some insurance provisions, let's go get some insurance if we can to cover any mistakes, any shortfalls that remind me. And it says, region, we're going to need some agreements to do revenue sharing and some other things, and make sure that everything is finished. So let's do something called the transition plan implementing agreement. And we're going to negotiate these agreements. That was the other thing, the thing I was talking about in terms of those agreements with the city of Marina, the city of Monterey, with county. How do you address the water, the water that's left, the habitat that's left, and the money that you need to generate for that, the transportation projects that are left, and how do you share the revenue with those people that are going to be developing, and those people that are building the planes to happen, to support the reuse of the plant? And like every organization, we have includes, so there are some CalPERS, then there are administrative liabilities, so the plan necessarily deals with that, and makes a provision for how to pay all of that by incumbent property tax revenues. It addresses the implementation agreements, it addresses how you transfer property that hasn't yet been transferred from the army to the local community. It has a glossary, it provides for updates and modifications, and some other minor, minor things. I'm going to skip over that transition plan implementing agreement, there's some details of what those agreements might look like, but essentially, they deal with, like I was talking about, how you generate revenue, how you share the revenue, and when and how you pay the projects to finish the plan, the program, so that everybody, every jurisdiction can be successful in the reuse of the base. Delray Oaks has hopes and dreams for its property that it got, it's about 600 plus or minus acres. How do you successfully make sure that Delray Oaks can use that property? How do you make sure that Marina or Seaside can use their property, or the city of Monterey? So there's still some key legal issues, and mainly, remember I was talking about what four was supposed to do, what LaFco was supposed to do? Well, we don't agree on exactly what and how they're supposed to do that. So that's an outstanding issue. Whether or not the base reuse plan survives and the master resolution, base reuse plan has requirements, like you set aside 20% for affordable housing, you protect your habitat, you contribute to transportation transit projects, you pay prevailing wages on four for first generation construction. Those are all questions, and questions have been raised about whether or not those provisions survive when four dissolves, and they might have to be addressed either by legislation or by litigation if they're not addressed by agreement. Whether or not all the projects that we talked about, those transit, transportation projects, need to be finished to successfully implement the reuse of the base. And finally, there's something called implementation agreements. Those are agreements that all the land use jurisdictions entered into, for how we're going to go forward, what we're committing to, how the base-wide programs and work based by cost, the base-wide mitigation measures. And finally, there's the Environmental Quality Act. What is it that we have to do when we approve this plan going forward to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act? And sure you can imagine, there's some disagreement maybe about that as well, some content that we have to do, some full level of environmental accountability. Four contends, and it's supported by legal opinion, that it's not a project, it's a change in the organization, it's a handing off of what four knows to various jurisdictions. But that is something that is still, it could be an outstanding legal issue. So it's not without, transition is not without costs, questions, I wish I had a road map, I wish I had a form, I wish I could just do it, you know? I would be a lot less afraid, and today, I might even have a few more hairs in my head as I was receiving the alternative forms of resolution that others thought were so fabulous. So there are some things, there are some things that are very important, I think, to Delray Oaks, and I'm trying to put what I call the highlight interest, that South Valley Road, we're in the process of constructing that, and working on the engineering and the planning for that. There is a litigation, but that's, I mentioned, I'll talk about that, in the sense that it's still impending litigation, but I can tell you that from the four perspective, we have identified it as a priority project, we have funds in our capital improvement program for that project, and we are proceeding to the extent that we can proceed with that. Habitat Conservation Plan and Species Protection, very important issue to Delray Oaks, and actually to four. Delray Oaks has some protected species inside its boundaries and inside its development lands, and so whoever develops that property will need to go comply with the Endangered Species Act and the California Endangered Species Act. That may require another thing, what they call Habitat Conservation Plan, it's a special thing, and a take permit in order to develop those lands. Four has as part of its capital improvement program, a base-wide habitat conservation plan that is working its way, has been working its way through the process for many years, and I will say, it's taken a lot of years, but there's a lot of turnover that happens, and it seems like every time there's a staff turnover at US Fish and Wildlife or any agency, the process is almost restarted again, and you have to go through the education process. So negotiation of these big, complex, multi-agency, federal, state documents is not always as quick or as fast or as easy as we think. And they added time, and they, yeah, but we're working on, I think we're going to have something, I forget, something by large or equal, but don't pin me down. Water supply, that's a big issue for Delray Oaks. The water infrastructure must be extended to Delray Oaks for you to receive your water allocation. The Ruine Coast Water District has water prepared for the order communities right now, and those are, there's some issues there, and I know some agreements are being worked on to ensure, to the extent we can ensure that your projects will have water moving forward. And then the environmental services cleanup, as I was mentioning, some of the pine, and maybe that doesn't apply to Delray Oaks, but guess what? You have some land that were coming up against it on the South Valley Road project, that was part of the cleanup, and it has covenants in place that govern how you, what you have to do, in order to remove the dirt and to use the land to do, to develop what you want to develop. And you will have that, and the developments will have provisions moving forward as four meets out of existence and properly starts transiting. Those are some issues that are on the table for you. I think I got most of your issues there, like habitat, water, roads, almost all of I think I got most of your issues there, like Habitat Water, Roads, almost all of them, right? Frost? Salamanders? Yeah, you're right for the Habitat, I think, for Salamanders. And then legislative amendments. I just put this in here because one of the things that's been talked about is, or I should say, FORA has been criticized in a lot of ways. It's big, it's bureaucratic, it's overstaffed, it pays too much. There are a lot of things that we hear swirling around. And so one of the things that I caught that, the end date and who is going to be on that board, it doesn't have to look like it looks today. And so one of the things that's been managed about is FORA might, which would compose the land use jurisdictions mainly, we probably will not have the staffing levels that we have today. We don't need those moving forward as projects start coming off of the list. We don't have the same kind of needs on the staffing side of things. And even though that we've been saying that, you can't make any guarantees, of course, on how involved the project is. But suffice it to say that as regional projects get handed over, as water projects get handed over, you don't need the same kind of project management, the same kind of planning staff as the Habitat Conservation Plans start to be put in play and a joint powers agency established to manage that habitat process. You don't need a second. End date for financing and board composition. How you do business? Board takes two votes for all of them, unless they all agree the first time. It's almost as bad as lawyers, right? They can't agree on anything. It might take us a couple times. Same thing for the boards, and I get it, is to change that to a majority vote. And then how we enforce policy might be something that the legislature could address in an extension. Or it might not be anything like this at all. It might be scandalous legislation, if there is legislation. Lots of options, lots of flexibility, I think, from the FORA staff standpoint. One of the biggest losses is the capture of the revenues from the projects that have already been approved and are entitled. That seventy-two million dollars is money that can be put back into the region, back into the projects that serve the entire process base and protect the habitat. And that's that. And if you have any comments, you can send them to plenty@fora.org. I have to tell you right now, I have not received one comment at that email address because everybody just sends it to the board at fora.org. And so the board members are being bombarded with information from Land Watch and others about the transition plan for different projects. Time line, November night, tomorrow is the first, next day, although on what's going to happen? I don't know what's going to happen. As there is decaying, there are at least three different alternative reservations flooding around out there. The board will then need, at some point prior to December thirty of two thousand eighteen, to approve the transition plan to send to LAFCO, the local agency formation commission. At some point in December, January timeframe, it would be my anticipation that under called negotiating period, there's a facilitator that's been hired or will be hired to help the cities and the counties reach agreements for how they're going to share money. I don't know about you, but you know, when I talk to my brothers and sisters, it comes down to money. They don't really always like to share so easily. They would kind of like to keep it to themselves and they only share for certain things. It's kind of not too much different here. And so the idea is to have a facilitator to help break through and negotiate those. And there will be some period of time that the facilitator assists to agreements. And then it's coming back to the FORA Board, to for a look see. How are we doing? Does anything change? What is our next step? Do we need legislation? If we can't agree, do we need litigation? Because we don't get what the agreements need? Do we, you know, change the plan? Do we change the plan in some way? And that's where we are on transition plan.
Sure. Thank you for that. It was an excellent briefing, trying to make sense of nonsensical actions that were going on with thirteen different members of that board. A couple major that here, fewer and tell differences and divorce that happened in here within two years. And nobody wants to compromise over there, people who are in a different direction. So we're trying to, we are protecting Delray Oaks. At one time, Delray Oaks had the number one capital improvement program on FORA, nineteen ninety-four. Now, the goodness of our heart, and we weren't ready to develop FORA over there. So we said, okay, we're ready. And it went down to all the other cities, their CIP. And now they're active agents over there trying to shut down our South Penitentiary Road and the extension now, Jones and Moore Boulevard. But we're successful thus far. It's fully funded. The engineering staff over there is working hand in hand with us and doing an outstanding job. That being said, any questions by members of the council? Have they had a chance to look at the packet? It's probably as clear as mud, I understand. But it's not a final agreement, it's a negotiating position. Anything can happen in the board, the three different positions. And I personally, I don't know if we're going to get it done, to tell you the truth. You've got some folks who refuse to compromise whatsoever. So we'll give them the old, call it straw, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a question for you on page two of thirty-five of the Fora Land Use Authority Board Report. There's a paragraph in there that says policy issue. And the second, or the second paragraph on the title, it says, "The transition plan further clarifies that despite some jurisdiction's assistance, that FORA's obligations go away or are unenforceable and will not be assumed by the jurisdictions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." Is that being addressed by the transition plan, paragraph two point two, where it talks about liabilities and obligations and assignment thereof?
Yes, so the draft resolution, I might add, this is the October twenty-ninth version of this. It's already had a couple changes by staff since then. But the way it's drafted, it basically takes the position that everything is assigned to the jurisdictions and that FORA has the legal capacity to do that in the absence of agreements. Because FORA does have agreements with every single land use jurisdiction. They're called implementation agreements. And they address what they call base-wide costs, which are basically building removal, things that aren't funded with that community facilities district tax. And then the capital improvement part of it are base-wide mitigation measures. And those are mainly the road projects, the habitat protection, water augmentation. And as this is drafted, we try to do that. As some of the alternatives are drafted, at least one of the alternatives I had a chance to look at is what I call an agreement to agree, meaning it doesn't assign anything. It just says this transition plan is based on agreements that maybe we'll get by December of two thousand eighteen.
So the difficult part of that, and I'm not really sure that you can address this, is that somebody sitting here in our position tries to understand, well, what's this really mean for the city of Delray Oaks? A city that went from roughly two point two million dollars in revenues a few years ago to four and a half million this year? We don't have a whole lot of money to pay for some undocumented obligation. And so I'm trying to get my hands around what that obligation might do. And exactly, how does this paragraph help you do that?
Right. So Delray Oaks is assigned the projects that are inside Delray Oaks boundaries. Right now, the only project that's there is South Penitentiary Road. And it's funded. It's fully funded, I think.
Yeah. I heard that.
It's fully funded with a star, star, star. You know, things can have enduring engineering phases of it. But it's planned to be fully funded and built before June thirty of two thousand twenty. So from that standpoint, you're not going to have any transportation impact. We have some target numbers built into this, which are the basis for funding responsibilities. And it's based on development inside your jurisdictional boundaries. So what it, what it looks like, what the capital improvement program looks at is every year, the staff from your city comes into FORA and they say, okay, this is what we think we're going to do, and this is what we think we're going to do. Every single city does that. We try to pile all of that. And that's how we're basing those projections. These are based on your development projections and other cities' development projections within the boundaries. And it's a target number for funding responsibility. We would expect that Delray Oaks would impose a tax on its properties on FORA to replace the amounts that would have been raised by FORA CFP with a Delray Oaks specific, facility district. And you know, Delray Oaks is lucky. You don't have, I mean, you have some people who have rights in that property that for the most part, you still retain ownership of the property. So you have the opportunity to put a district right over this so that any developer that comes in knows right away, okay, here are my fees, here's what I have to pay, et cetera, et cetera. So you have the, other jurisdictions don't have that same kind of flexibility because they already have developments that are in progress. So they've transferred their properties. And the developers are saying, uh-uh, nah, not on my project.
So thank you for that. They get a little deeper. Page fourteen of thirty-five, paragraph two point two, point six on the transportation transit. Down there, about three quarters, sixty percent of the way down in that paragraph, a little short paragraph. It talks about money being allocated. And it says, "This transportation plan assigns funding responsibility." And it has passed down here, Delray Oaks, thirteen million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars, ten percent to County of La La Lake. What does that mean?
Actually, I think it's kind of, it's a wrong percentage. It's sixteen point eight percent to the city of Delray Oaks. The outstanding amount of transportation projects.
I see the comma after the O's, and that separates some of those accounts.
Sorry.
So it's twenty, excuse me, it's twenty-two million, two thirty-four, two sixty-five to the city of Delray Oaks.
Right. It's based on your development. It's based on development projections inside your city. So if, if FORA were to remain in existence and Delray Oaks developed based on what we've been told, what FORA staff has been told and what's in the capital improvement program, that's the amount of dollars that would be raised within the jurisdictional boundaries of Delray Oaks. I know. I know. You know?
Well, that seems like a language number. So that, is that saying that they think that there's twenty-two million dollars worth of capital improvement projects that need to be done in FORA, three hundred and sixty-five dollars we have?
No. What it's saying is, and this is the hard part of trying to explain that this will, the divorce of FORA. But essentially, when you do that, you know, FORA was a base-wide regional plan. It spread costs across the base. So every developer who developed at any place on the base paid exactly the same fee. It was to help promote quality across the base. So it's not to say that Delray Oaks has that many projects inside Delray Oaks boundary. But it says region-wide, base-wide, that's the proportionate they're share based on the amount of development that you have within the jurisdictional boundaries. Every jurisdiction, and then there's another concept. Now, if you have Marina now, has all of the approved, most of the approved development. They are the biggest generator of community facilities district fees. Or will be soon. And they're also the biggest deficit in terms of regional fees to help reduce some of those costs base-wide. That's an amount that is lost when the FORA CFP goes away, when the FORA financing mechanism goes away. The FORA financing mechanism has both revenue sharing in it and revenue generation in it. So it assesses a fee, brings the fees into the program, and then it sends the things out to those projects, those places, costs that they're not in any one jurisdictional boundary, they're across boundaries. That's how the revenue generation and revenue sharing take place. When FORA goes away, that has to be, that revenue generation and revenue sharing process has to be recreated somehow. These are funding targets based on FORA's program. It's not the only way. It's one way to address the program. And it was fully anticipated that this would be negotiated as the different jurisdictions got together. That's our topic. How are we really going to raise my two million dollars inside the city of Delray Oaks? And where is that money going to go? And when is it going to go there?
Okay. So on your chronicle, if you think of the summer, it's a scene that we had a fresh copy. On page eight, at the top, there's this updated CFP piece. And it's just kind of shocking when you're looking, you're seeing that in two thousand twenty, it says, "Delray Oaks entitled forty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy." Most two thousand twenty, entitled forty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy. Proposed twenty million, thirty-two thousand.
So that might be.
I think that needs an explanation.
I'm sorry. So entitled development for those projects that have received their approvals in the radio. Inside Delray Oaks, we have your RV resort park that's already received some entitlements. We did initiative, we approved it, came to FORA. It's been determined consistent with base reuse plan. And FORA is, that's what we call entitled. And that's also why the fees are so low because that project is not treated as residential values. It's treated as something else and pays a lower fee under the base reuse plan, community facilities district. Post, that proposed, you have some housing and some hotel projects that have been on the list for a while. And housing and hotels have to pay the highest on the community facilities district fee. And that's why that number is so high. If you never built a hotel and you never built the housing under the FORA program, you would never pay. And the FORA program would be twenty million dollars short. Or it would be adjusted. The projects would be delayed until such times, either you raised grants or you got hand sales revenue. You brought money in from another project that came in or property tax revenues. That's how that money would be replaced and the projects would actually be completed.
Okay. So condensing all of this, the way I hear it is that what we really wind up paying is going to be a matter of what we actually do with that property. And that this, this number is just based on some projection that was made years ago that has not been updated by any changes to the general plans or anything like that, which we have, we've not updated.
It's, it's based on what your staff has told. Our staff is going to be, going to be developed. So yes, to the extent that that hasn't been updated either in your general plan or by your staff, then yes, that's a true statement. But from the FORA hat, we update these numbers every year. So our capital improvement program and those projections get updated every year. We go out every year and say, hey, is this still the same projection? Or does it need to be adjusted? And we do that to every jurisdiction. So every jurisdiction, these, all of these numbers are based on every single jurisdiction's projections.
And this obviously from Marina says they're done.
Yeah, they will have been fully, that's according to what their projection says is that they don't have any proposed projects. And not because all of their projects have been entitled. I will just tell you, their pushback is very simple, and this may be more than we get into. But their pushback is, well, we may have entitled those projects, but you know, there's a guarantee they're going to be built. Okay, well, that's fair enough. But when you're trying to complete a program, a base-wide program, you can't really base the projections on that. You have to assume, let's say there was a water cutback. Which projects are going to go forward? And where are they going to go forward? Well, they're not going to go forward in the jurisdictions that have the proposed development. They are going to go forward in the jurisdictions that have already entitled and allocated water to allow those developments to go forward. So that's a good sentence, but maybe not factually realistic.
Well, thank you. This has been very helpful. Any other questions on the members of the council? Yes?
I would have to say it was an excellent presentation. I'm particularly glad that. I'm particularly glad that the whole audience as well as myself enjoyed some of the history for a living, for what has been accomplished, and that was very good. And yes, your questions were outstanding and your answers were outstanding also. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers?
No, thank you, it was very good, very good.
I'll just ask, any questions, our members of the public? Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
I appreciate the presentation. I'm Beverly Bean, I'm on the board of the Legal Women Voters of Monterey County. We studied whether or not FORA should sunset and we studied their performance over the past twenty-four years. We based it on six governance criteria, and we also studied the ways to transfer FORA's responsibilities to other agencies after it sunsets. As a result of our study, we believe that FORA should sunset in 2020 based on its past performance and the availability of alternatives to undertake FORA responsibilities. I will not go through the whole thing, I just want to stress a few things that I don't think were adequately covered in this presentation. FORA has failed to effectively address blight in a timely manner and has passed the responsibility and costs onto the individual jurisdictions, leaving them with a bill of at least forty-nine million dollars to address blight removal when FORA sunsets with no funding mechanism currently in place. FORA failed to update the base reuse plan in over twenty years and to prepare annual reports as required by SEQUA. FORA failed to make valid findings of consistency of general plans and projects, and it failed to address seawater intrusion as required by BRP policies at base reuse plan. FORA failed to prepare a transition plan in a timely manner, they've had since 2014 to make this plan, and up until 2018, there was no transition plan, and they are actively pursuing a further extension. FORA transferred the responsibility for addressing affordable housing needs to the cities and the counties, and the county where it will be addressed after the transition. They, FORA adopted a funding structure which will not fully fund its transportation obligations, the habitat conservation obligations, and water augmentation. And to stress, successor agencies exist for all general government functions and they have the authority and capability to accept those functions, that is, the cities of Delray Oaks, Marina, Seaside, and so forth. FORA funding associated with those functions will transfer with those functions and the jurisdictions have the ability to enact new funding mechanisms such as mellow roofs, impact fees, and so forth. And most importantly, FORA has a large staff with total salaries and benefits which exceed two point nine million dollars this fiscal year. The operating budget exceeds five million dollars annually. Sunsetting FORA would say five million dollars annually, which could be used by successor agency to fund local projects and staff support. Your questions, Mr. Allian, were very perceptive.
Three minutes, please. The time is under three minutes, everybody has three minutes.
I urge you all to be well informed about this extension of FORA and what your actual responsibilities are. They have a great way of making large projections, seventy-two million dollars will not be lost.
Great, now, any other comments, our members of the public?
Good evening, councilman Mayor, city manager and city attorney. My name is Jason Campbell, I'm a councilmember, Seaside also an alternative to board member to FORA, but of course, I'm speaking here for myself as an individual. I paid a lot of attention to, to FORA in the past and for the last ten years, and there was a little, I was there on something about the voting tomorrow, FORA has this outrageous situation where unless there's a unanimous vote, it needs to come back for a second vote. Tomorrow is what I want to transition to, I was also, wish that second vote was required because there was some question on the last meeting. I just want to point out that there's a little bit of fear hovering with the community facility district fees that might get lost if FORA goes away. As I said earlier, there's always developer impact fees, there's, there's other ways communities can, can recruit those fees. Any developer out there now who signed a contract and knows that those fees are in place and your expectation is that they will pay those fees. One of the operative words and councilmemoraries questioned was some of the obligations, some. That's really important because we have, what, there are legal contractual obligations that FORA has from SEQUA and any contracts that they have, those are obligations. What you're being asked to do here is add to those obligations by adopting a CIP and making it an obligation. Could you imagine if you took your own CIP and turned it into an obligation? It makes no sense. And that's, we, we adjust CIPs every year. I kind of call them wish lists myself, but that is what's, what you're being asked to do here in support. Future costs, sharing the administrative costs and a lot, that's really, really an issue, but something that's kind of glossed over is litigation, maybe, they pulled out a lot of the administrative fees, but litigation, there may be voting members who vote to move forward a project, like you said, property, whatever, but then when it's sued, they're not covering the litigation fees. I mean, that's like an indemnifying agencies, and I don't know that you really want to do that because then it puts it on the rest of us who are actually the property owners. I think there's going to be a little bit of PIMS, like a three hundred thousand dollar fund for litigation, but history shows us that's, you know. So anyway, I really think this transition plan adds to present, it's not worse.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to discuss this, or speak on this matter?
I'm here, Mayor, I'm a councilman, my name is George Riley, I'm the moderator of the Delray Oaks. But I think the transition planning that's been taking place falls far short of a serious attempt to create the termination conditions that is demanded by law. I participated in the transition committee discussions in the early part of 2018, I'll go through it until June, July, when it became obvious to me that that process was flawed, seriously flawed. They would have a big discussion, it was a large group, had a big discussion, they never asked for a straw vote, they never asked for any vote, it was just opinion, 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 opinion. It was up to the staff to kind of consolidate that, but it was a, it was a task force that was created by FORA with a specific responsibility to generate a transition plan. There were a lot of ideas created, they're not in the transition plan, but there was never a sense of the group about going forward, there was never a sense of what priorities were high and what priorities were low. That process was so flawed, it just was disgusting to me how a group of adults with a serious charter developed a transition plan required by law, could not even have the process that generated a priority list. It just seemed pretty ugly to me. But I also think that there are serious issues about the transition plan going forward. I'm going to just make a reference to like a twenty-three-year-old, twenty-four-year-old kid living at home, they've lived there since day year one, two, twelve, fourteen, they should learn something, they should begin to get skill, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, they should be getting ready, they kind of need one, twenty-two, twenty-three, at some point you get a little tired of just going on continuing the way it is. All I'm saying, he's twenty-four years old, they're, they're flawed, to share it tonight, we made the easiest solution possible, we're going to continue the way we want to continue the way it is. That means you keep the twenty-four-year-old at home and nothing changes. That's it, it's time to grow up, it's time to turn, turn FORA loose, put the jurisdictions that have the responsibility right now, pick out the rest of the responsibility that's their own jurisdiction, that's within their own jurisdiction. And you don't need, you don't need San City, you don't need City Grove, you don't need Carmel making decisions, they're concerned in their jurisdiction. That's what the transition plan contains, you don't need that. George, it was nice that you wanted to introduce the curious twenty-four-years-old.
Yeah, thanks, George.
Anybody else wishing to address this issue, city council? Okay, commentary, this is closed, back to the city council, back to the council. Listen, the discussion I had in front of the lady, any, any guidance or any direction that any of you have other than what we have right now and that won't be discussed thus far? Yes?
The only comment I have is I find myself agreeing with George Riley in some cases. And I do agree, I have said it for some time, that I think FORA needs to go away, it needs to sunset. I realize there's a ton of issues that have to get resolved, but I really believe that it's like, we need to cut, we need to cut the chains and we need to get on, it's going to be our problem someday anyway. So let's figure out how to make it as smooth a transition as we can and let FORA sunset as it's supposed to in 2020.
I think, I think most of us agree with that, that FORA will go away, that it's agreements we have to come up with between our city and other cities. For example, for mitigation, right now, if we want to develop a forward, the mitigation cost is fifty thousand dollars per acre to be able to build a one-acre at FORA unless we have some other mitigation away of doing it. And we're working on right now finding a way, agreements, we don't have this massive, we're just on mitigation fees, we're selling it or involved for fifty thousand, then you've got the facility, guess we're at the top of that, the point where if we don't find a way with these agreements, ain't nothing going to happen out there. So we're working on that right now, your points won't take it. And the sad, well, not a sad thing, the, the, the issue is, there are certain organizations who now want the development out there, but they want development, I understand respect, I mean, I disagree, but I respect it, some people want to do that. On the other hand, they want to be able to provide for the habitat out there, but you can't provide for the habitat out there unless you develop funds, you generate funds to be able to get, to provide the habitat, to generate funds, you've got to have the infrastructure and you have to have some relevance. So you can't say no development, there's no money to help the habitat, so it's one of these catch-22s, there's a happy medium and there's somewhere, and we're searching for that medium right now. FORA probably will go away, and again, my own personal opinion, you've got since diametrically a village interest, one city doesn't, does not want to have anything to do whatsoever with FORA. And they, and that's a city that has most of the, or you do, they really don't need FORA that much, and they figure we go our own way, on our end. We go, let me defer, 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 be a good neighbor, be the last one to be developed, so we need funds, we need the cooperation of our group, the whole thing's going to fall apart. The FORA has, has provided funds, if they can't get it done, then by 2020, there'll be funds available for us to finish our project, but that's going to be flawed. So, but we're moving forward, the chances are FORA will go away, and it's a matter of coming up with agreements that our city chairman will be working on or our city manager will be working on. Any other, any other guidance from the council? You all, if you, if you want to save money on coffee, show up at FORA in the morning at two o'clock, I guarantee you, your adrenaline will be flying, will be flowing freely, so anyway, that's enough of this issue. Thank you very much for coming. So Sherri, thank you for coming. Okay, next time we'll be in place. Next we go for three C, consider ordinance two ninety-four, the essential, the essential policy. First, I want to say that I and ILO are deciding to put ordinance two ninety-four and two ninety-five on the agenda this evening, the city manager definitely do it on it and have it printed on the agenda. Here's my reason for placing the agenda on the agenda. Delray Oaks has had, in its past, at least one, and I would say more than one, imperial mayors who ran the city pretty much by themselves, considering the city council being annoying the best. I and other members of this current city council have experienced this firsthand, you can talk to them after, I'll tell you what I'm talking about. When I was elected, the first three things I did were to call the city staff together, direct the mayor's parking place to be removed, the mayor doesn't have a private parking place, just like anybody else. Then I cut up the mayor's credit card in front of the staff and directed no city council member will ever be issued a city council, a credit card again, and that policy's been that for ten years, there's no need for, in our city or the other city, we have credit cards. If we have to spend money on something that's overseen by the city manager, we've got to be able to justify it and it's overseen by the entire council when it comes down to the budget for our consideration. I also reconfirmed with our city manager that according to our municipal code, in California state law, he didn't work for the mayor, he works for the city council. In the past, we've had problems where the mayor thought that the, the city manager worked for him, that's not the case. The city manager works for the city council, the mayor's potential ahead and helps and works closely with the, with the city manager, but the working relationship is, he does what we tell him to do, not individually, being the mayor or even the city council member. Shortly afterwards, I told our city council, we're executing a policy, and if any city council members, if I don't place it on the agenda, they should let me know, I will place it on the agenda unless it involves some national hot button Republican Democrat issue such as nuclear free zone, abortion, gun rights, et cetera, et cetera, you've all seen it, it tears city council apart. What can we do with a nuclear free zone? Were Soviets trying to knock blow us up in order to, no. All these, these national issues, all they do is divide councils, we've got a great home in this council right now. There's no need that city council members aim to leave each other over issues that directly affect our city. I also added that if I, if I refuse to agendaize an issue, any two city council members can get together if they felt strongly about it and let me know, and I would defer their wishes and put it on the city, on the council agenda. A two-member rule is there to ensure we didn't violate the Brown Act. You can't have any three members of a city council or a majority of city council conferring or colluding on any issue, otherwise that violates California state law. This request to agendize by two city council members happened several times in the past against my better wishes and instincts, including a time when I appointed Kristen Clark to be my vice mayor. After I did that, two members, council members came up to me and filed a petition to make the vice mayor appointment open to debate and vote, which I did, put it on the agenda or identity, I didn't want to do it, it went directly against my interests. The matter was agendized, discussed, and voted upon. Kristen won the vote, three, two, the two members obviously that you vote for. The reason for agendizing ordinance two ninety-four, this agenda management policy, is to formalize that policy in Delray Oaks municipal code to ensure all residents and the city council members have a voice during council meetings and no future, and I'm not talking about my succeeding mayor, any future mayor in the future can not monopolize and not control what any council members are saying, or other council members have constituents and want to put something put on the agenda, you can't have one person saying, no, it will not be discussed and voted upon in this council chambers. That's anti-democratic. You know, that's, that's my rationale, that's why I put it on there. We'll begin a council comment right now in council comments.
Yes, thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I, this one is a no-nonsense reaction, I mean, to me, this is no nonsense, this is the way it should be. The, I did a little checking here after I read this, and the city of City Grove has very similar kind of language. I know that the city of Monterey has similar kind of language, I know that the city of Salinas, in the city of Salinas, the mayor sets the agenda, but that any two council members can add an item to the agenda, so that's a practice already in place. This just would, our, our current, our current ordinance on this says something about the clerk, the city, in other words, the city manager would put the agenda together, or Kim would put the agenda together, doesn't say anything about anybody approving the So I think it's very appropriate that this be added and further define exactly what it is, how we'll put in the city agenda together. As I've responded to several people on social media, you all have the ability to tell the city council if you'd like to have something added to it. If you either get the mayor to agree to that, or you get two members of the council to agree to it, we'll get it on the agenda. Actually, the way the thing is worded right now, you should just submit it to the city court and it'll get put on the agenda. So I, I see obvious problems with that. There could be all kinds of, sort of superfluous kinds of things brought to the city for consideration. So you have elected representatives, you should be working through us, through them in the future, since I'll be stepping down from this position very shortly, you bring things to the city council members and, and it'll get on the agenda. things to the city council members, and it'll get on the agenda. I am very much in favor of passing this ordinance, so that we have a full description of what our process is. It doesn't exist, but, well, the comments might, yes, I'd like to.
Just to add to that, I think it's important that everybody realizes that we haven't always had a city manager. We've had a chief of police that was acting as city manager, we've had part-time city managers, we've had no city managers, we've had other managers that we no longer have for certain other reasons, that come right down to these ordinances. We wanna make sure that, over the past year and a half since we've gotten Dino, we've realized that things weren't tightened up here, and we need to, and we have been tightening ordinances up here and there. It takes a lot of time, it takes the city attorney to go over these ordinances and to create them, and I think it's important that we continue, we have to continue to go through our ordinances and update them. A lot of our oldest, I don't know how old this particular ordinance is, but I think it's well over 30, 25, 30? Before the run. We need to go through and update even more, so be prepared, because there's more to come. And I'd like to refer to the, to your city attorney, maybe you can shed a little bit of light on this.
To the point about creating the Brown Act, I think the current 2.04.030 says you've gotta submit things at least six business hours before the council meeting. Clearly, with the Brown Act, that's, I mean, it's no longer true, it's no longer possible, I should say.
Okay, any other comments, questions, or any questions from the other side of the council? Say nothing after public, any comments, questions, or any other questions?
Hello, Jason Campbell, since I'm here. Anyway, kudos to the mayor for the open-minded. I just wanted to say, see, it's like how it's gone through this in the past, and it opened a real, kind of tricky, tricky topic, and I just wanna say, well, I applaud what you're doing here, trying to make policy of it, and the worst, great. Three members can always, you know, let's get on the agenda, three members can always change it in the future. I get that, so, so you guys are good, we have a different situation at Seaside. But my one caution that I take personally is the limit of having two council members be able to put something on the agenda where the city attorney, who's an elected official, can't put something on the agenda, or the city manager, who's an unelected official, can't put something on the agenda. I just feel like you're feeding a little bit of power there, just for thought, but I wholeheartedly agree with you guys, getting a policy that's rational to get them on the agenda.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comments? Say nothing back to the council. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's long walk. And also, current 12 orders in place. I always felt that the agenda should be open to everyone, and I support this change, and I would have made it, and I have opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, back to, yes, yes.
With regard to the gentleman's comment, the city attorney provisioned, most of the fact that's to set things for close session when there's litigation or items such as that.
Okay, back to the council, and there came a motion approving the first reading of ordinance 294, agenda management policy. We have a motion, or a second, and a second, any discussion, a motion?
Yes, one thing.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, because it was mentioned here, and again, I referred to the City of Pacific Grove. Do we want to, as a, as a council, want to consider that it be one council member versus two? Do you have to bring a question along with you? In order to agenda? And tell me, I mean, I just wanted to throw that out.
My rationale is, if you're looking at Democratic, if you get a lyric, or somebody outlier on the council, they can tie everything, they can tie things up, they can put $50 on the agenda. If you have two, and you have, if you have a check, a rational check, or he's gonna have to, he or she reflected on somebody else to get a reality check.
I understand that. I understand that policy. I don't know what effect this had in the City of Grove, but I know that they have seven council members, that's a problem.
Yeah, that's right.
Seven council members.
Okay, we have any other discussion?
I prefer to keep it this too.
Okay. One thing, is anybody saying aye? Aye, why opposed? One is very easy answer, thank you very much. Next, we have ordinance 295, appointments to boards and committees policy. With regard to this one, it's basically to clarify what would happen if the mayor makes an appointment to an outside agency, and the majority of the city council doesn't approve the appointment. During my nine years as mayor, this has never happened. I've always gotten buy-in from each of the council members as which boards and agencies they want to serve on. I got buy-in from them, and then I basically put it together, in the January meeting, brought it forth in the slate, after everybody had a chance to tell me what they wanted, and we voted on it. And basically, it was approved, never had any problems in nine years. As I won't be serving as mayor here whenever, I asked the city attorney, what would happen if the city council did not approve the appointment made by the mayor? The bottom line is, for him, is, it's unclear, there's nothing in it, there's no, so we have a legal quandary right now, and this is based, this procedure is not specified in the municipal code. This ordinance basically clarifies the legal procedure. We'll ask the city attorney, do you wanna comment on that right now, please?
Yeah, so, this is the procedure by which someone will be nominated and be confirmed. I did hear a concern that, but I wanted to clarify, for every regional board commission, that regional board commission defines what, who can be appointed to that. For instance, for FORA, Sheriff David was just here, FORA requires that it be a member of council that be appointed, so, it's just, I wanted to clarify that point, as I heard some discussion, so. This doesn't mean you can appoint any, any citizen of Delray Oaks. Know that the regional body has their standard, and board has, it's gotta be an elected official on the city council. This is just the process by which that person is appointed.
Yes. Now, I'd like to piggyback on that. In my knowledge, the only regional board that I'm aware of that has an exception to that, elected officials have to be a member of the board, so you have to have an elected official, with the exception of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, which is highlighted by the amazing fact that Gary Gales has been on that board for 44 years. 44 years. And I gotta tell you, he's an amazing individual, a guy who's approaching 90 years of age, his mind's still sharp as a tack, and he brings with him 44 years of experience on that board, which is invaluable, which is invaluable. So, just to highlight this one here, our current code addresses this in no way at all, which I think is a gross oversight. We should have had something in place a long time ago. So, the, I think it addresses something about the, that shall be one standing committee, and I think that's the council. It also talks about some committees that we need to enforce. We have only, it talks about three members of the finance committee. We've never had three members of the finance committee, so, it's time to be stiffing this up, make it work, and enforce it. We need to, the council needs to enforce these rules. I think that's it. Thank you.
Other comments by council members? After public, any comments by any of the public?
Hello, I'm King Creer from Three Hundred Mile, and for the past 10 years, Mayor Eland has run the City of Delray Oaks with what I'm sure he believes to be irreproachable integrity. With this in mind, it seems logical that if Mayor Eland had any time during the past 10 years, how many weaknesses or deficits in our city ordinances, he would have taken action and immediately moved to amend any poorly constructed ordinances. This being the case, I believe the council must take time tonight and reflect deeply on what changing these ordinances means. It means that you support a double standard. It means that you believe that what worked well for Mayor Eland for 10 years will not work well for Mayor Kirk. And most of all, it means you have not heard what the majority of our city citizens want for our community. I believe the wisest course of action this city council could take is to stop and listen. Please consider this. If you had listened to the overwhelming citizen's support and voted to join Monterey Bay Community Power, it is likely that no one would have decided to run against Mayor Eland this year. How many times does a community need to vote or gather signatures to get your attention? By now, you must understand that our community wants leaders who work to represent what is important to us, not politicians who tell us what we should want. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Phil Rex, I'm calling 5840 Drive. Mayor Eland, Mayor Eland, city council staff. First of all, I wanna thank you for all working on behalf of our city, and the same with Dennis Allen, I'm sure you're gonna miss you over in 1W as well. I would rather like to ask a question. Why are these changes to city policy in my town? It seems like, on the surface, it seems like a direct attempt to make life difficult for Mayor elect Kirk. As for the rest of the city council, I'm gonna address you all. I am sure you recognize that almost 60% of the voters in this city voted for a change in the status quo. Your actions denied that subsequent council meetings, both scheduled and special, prior to and after Mayor Eland takes, assumes her responsibilities, will set the tone of politics for the city for some time. Each, the citizens of Delray Oaks who voted for change will hold each and every one of the city council members accountable. And you should remember that tonight and in subsequent council meetings, we expect cooperation with the new mayor. Should this not be the case, rest assured that those same 60% of the citizens who have voted, will vote for change, who voted for change will work tirelessly to recall and replace every single sitting council member here. That's not a threat, it's a promise. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Alexis Bunton, I live on Portola Drive, and before I make my comment, I wanna thank all of you for your service and your time. I know it takes countless hours to do this. So my comment is really that, I think it's really important, or deplorable that these agenda items were agendized and scheduled on no notice. Pop-up meetings like this with this city administration and council is not an accident, it's a pattern. I think it's disrespectful to us citizens of the city who can't participate on no notice. Mayor Eland, you just, I appreciate that you said in your comments earlier that you wanna maximize citizen participation, but if you look around the room, how many parents of young children under five are in this room? This is a significant component of this community, and my family has to sacrifice right now, so I have to wait to comment on the agenda item that's purposely put last. And if you notice, we have, we have a pattern of agenda items, and you know the city citizens are gonna complain about are put last, so we have to sit here and wait for hours while we have families up, hence, no parents, no citizen participation. So 294 is great, 295 is a decent idea, but why not two days after the election? Why can't we wait till January? Why can't we trust the person that 60% of us elected to just take care of this and do it? We know it's because this current administration wants certain people on and off boards at committees, and that there are key development-related boards where they don't want someone they know that's gonna have a sustainability focus. So, it's fishy, and it definitely goes against Delray Oaks city values in no particular order. Also, council members, we have lost trust and faith in you. I personally have a scorecard of issues where you have voted against things that the majority of people here want. Some of the things you have, this is no, not to you, you're new, go ahead. Some of the things you have voted for, other things you know the majority of citizens here want, and have actively voted against it. So I'll be watching this city council to see if you want to be accountable to what the voters want, and if you don't, you now know that we're gonna push back loudly and publicly. And finally, since we always have lectures with the last word, development is not synonymous with habitat restoration. I have personally raised millions of dollars to restore habitat with no development, so that's my final word.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Cheryl Lee, please. I wanna start off by thanking Dennis. I feel like you have been a council member who has been engaged and thoughtful, and I appreciate your engagement, and so, I mean, it's good. All right. Lame duck mayor, and city council members, I'd like to thank you for what you've done here tonight. Throughout the campaign, we spoke of the lack of transparency on this political body. We shared with voters how this lame duck mayor and city council always has an agenda, you always have an angle, and we never hear about it until we're lying inside it at a council meeting. So I'd like to thank you all for perfectly illustrating what we've been saying all along. Not 24 hours after the election, we post notification of a meeting that will severely limit the power of the mayor. Why now? This temper tantrum was clearly well-planned, and right now, you all, Dino very much included, sit before us as manipulators and deviant social servants who are willing to ignore the voice of the voters, regardless of the strong message they sent on election day. You must be concerned for the future. Do you worry that the power that you held for so long will be diminished by the voice of the people? When did you conjure this plan for change? Was it when you started to see the Allison for mayor signs pop up? Was it all of our voices on Nextdoor that concerned you? Was it when you went out to talk to voters and they told you to your faces that they would not be voting for you because it was time for a change? When you saw your powers slipping from your hands, did you think, maybe there's something we can do about this, regardless of what the citizens of Delray Oaks are saying, regardless of what bubble they color in at the voting box? We can make a change that will be the ray of the power and the will of the new mayor. Clearly, you do not think this change was important enough to be before, but now you couldn't even wait 24 hours to illustrate the power of the mayor and shift that power to the council. Are you worried about who will represent you on FORA? Are you worried about who will represent you on TANSE? Do you not think that the new council and mayor are capable of handling such affairs? And so you needed to put in a policy that provides enough wiggle room so that now, if the mayor's appointments are not approved by the city council, the city council has the power to make a nomination for appointment? Hmm, I wonder who they might nominate? Could it be the very person that we have now voted out of office? Are they manipulating change procedures to benefit yourselves? Are they completely ignoring our voices and move forward in a manner that is so shockingly, yet unfortunately predictable? We knew you all lacked integrity before you pulled this stunt, but this meeting lets us shout it from the hills. What you're doing tonight is what you've been doing all along. You run the show for your own benefit, and you leave all of your integrity up there.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to be reading a letter from Lynn C. Rose. She says, "Dear Delray Oaks city council members, last night, I remember reading comments on Nextdoor from people who were attempting to get our next city council off to a good start by thanking our current mayor for his service, congratulating our new mayor-elect, and promising, and I quote, 'That staff and council will work with our new mayor to keep the city moving forward in good ways.' I felt hopeful. Then this meeting is announced. It is one of the most underhanded, morally and legally questionable possible responses to the election results that you possibly imagine. We've all seen how the council votes. Think back to the last city council meeting where the vote on a council member appointment was a private ballot on a slip of paper, and the numbers weren't even announced, just the outcome. I've never seen anything like it, and I can only assume from the secrecy of it, that the council voted as a block despite the testimony given. From that meeting, I cannot see how so many change in the rules, particularly regarding the ordinance to change the rules for plans, it's anything other than waiting for the news. And a direct act says the bill of the voters. If it isn't illegal, it should be. Where is the spirit of collaboration? Where is the mandate to follow the will of people? It is undemocratic and unworthy of our community. With respect and great discipline, ladies and gentlemen, that Oaks."
Next speaker, please.
Mayor of the city council, again, Mayor Levine, board member, legal with the voters. In my capacity as a long-term board member, I have attended meetings and given opinions and testimony throughout Monterey County. There are only two jurisdictions that- There are only two jurisdictions that hold their public comments at the end of the meeting, and those are fora and Delray Oaks. Draw your own conclusion.
And then you're going to hold a comment?
That was the letter, so I'll go with the first. I just want to acknowledge that I understand the concern of those of you on the dais and in this building without me coming in and the changes that will happen. There is misinformation being spread about me, who I am, what I have said, and what I plan to do. I invite each of you to reach out to me and ask me yourselves. It is unfortunate that this is being handled in this way rather than, as I hoped, together on the dais, as has been done in the past. I asked our city manager for the full listing of the committees and who is currently on them. I would like to suggest that all council members send Dino their preferred positions, and we see what remains open. Let's work on this together. The election is over. Please trust the democratic process and trust that all of your neighbors here also love the city as much as you do that we all call home.
Next speaker, please.
Here are three pointill on reading for Kevin Rashkoff, who is teaching tonight in B.C. Mayor of council. Every public servant and a woman needs to ask themselves an important philosophical question: do you work for the mayor and the other full people in the council? Do you work for the citizens of the city? Is this the new era of transparency that was promised in your election trail? Dennis, here's a year on Next Door that you're confident that staff at council will work with our new mayor to keep the city moving forward in good ways. Kind of this is it. This proposed change to the community staff is a blatant attempt to subvert the incoming mayor and yet another example of the bathroom obfuscation and obstruction of will of the citizens of the city, an attempt to hold them in power by any means necessary. This council is about to throw what amounts to a coup that will fundamentally change the way the city is governed, setting up a possibility of a charter government run by three council members that will hold virtually all the power of the government. The two incoming council members need to remember that, running unopposed, they were only able to get half the voters to cast ballots for them. Half of those voting on Tuesday decided the best option for Delray Oaks City Council was none above. What does that cover? I can guarantee you that the two years from now, the voters will have several great options to choose from. The time has appointed you, so all decided that you will remain shackled to the unpopular policies and culture that has just voted out of office, or if you are willing and able to work for the citizens of the city. We are watching, and you can actually depend on the fact that we will be voting. The actions of the outgoing mayor of the city council that will awaken the sleeping population of Delray Oaks, we are now watching and taking action. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Diane Cotton. I live on Tweed Street, and I would just like you to consider one thing, and that is that if you were going to be continuing to be mayor, would this new regulation still take place?
I mean, ever, please. I apologize. I know all of you. I've been with all of you for twelve years or so. I've been married to my wife for thirty-eight years, Kristen Clark. I've known Dennis for many years. And to hear this character assassination, of course, I guess I shouldn't be surprised considering the way the campaign was run, and this hideous postcard that went out completely embarrassed me as a human being. To think that someone could put a postcard like this out to embarrass a gentleman that has done nothing but do his best for the city for ten years and served our country as a ranger, just makes me want to go stick my head in the sand because I can't believe I live among people that would do such a thing as this. And as far as I'm concerned, if the people of Delray Oaks think this is the right way to run a campaign, no way in hell is my way to run for reelection in two years because I don't want to be around people like this. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
So I just want to say that this has been a very vindictive and a very slanderous group of people. And if you think yourselves as-
Who are you and where you live?
I live at Four Los Angeles Drive.
I'm sorry, you're supposed to say your name and where you live.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Theresa Allen.
My husband's Dennis. Is this supposed to be addressing the council, not us?
Well, I'm going to address you because you were so-
No, I've personally seen him tell people to address the council, so he needs to say this is how it is.
It's okay, say what you want to.
Okay. I just want to apologize to all of you for these people. You know, I hope that when they go home and they think about the words they used and viciousness and saying that my husband was not an honest man, they have to live with that, not me. You're an honest man, so are all of you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Mark Thomas, three boxer place. I just want to say thank you for really working it done. I appreciate you all the hard work you have put in here, but I think the timing of this special meeting, again, as some of the other people have said, is taking time out of our day. I just question, why haven't we done within twenty-four hours after you lost your seat as the mayor, and why doesn't it need to be done before you leave your seat? And that's the only thing that brings true questions to this, is why not the previous nine years that we're here?
Any other?
Good evening, I'm Dr. Jackson, I'm a very busy here, brother. The nice thing about vexed or is that anybody can post anything they want, true or false. Unfortunately, people don't know what is true or false. Mr. Ollion defended some, tried to correct some false statements, and you would ban them out. You know, that just shows you the kind of people that are on Next Door. Next Door, everybody here seems to think, I'll take that back, most people here seem to think that Back, Next Door is gospel. I wish I could say the word, it's BS, you know? Come down to the city, find out what the facts are. The incoming mayor accused Jerry Eland of having police takedown signs, not coming down and finding out what the facts were, and then had to apologize. Is this the kind of mayor we want? I want a girl, excuse, I want a person that knows the facts before they open them up.
We have a public comment very often, this is just related to this one.
Thank you, sorry.
I wasn't trying to- Tony Focaccia will appear, there's been a lot of stuff on Tony Focaccia comments on this board, it's a little bit of a hassle now. We have three minute comment after a nomination.
So now, I'm sorry, intimidating now, but I just wanted to say that especially in the current climate, generally speaking in this country, I don't think that, I mean, I think it's okay to thank you for your service and the years you've spent working and helping the city, and at the same time, welcome Allison and wish her the best and hope that we all live together and maybe try to lower down the level of animosity. So and then the second thing I wanted to say was, I missed the vote on the letter to, about the airport, what is it called, the Northside Road? And I just wanted to say that I feel there's a little discrepancy between what was said in the weekly article and the current state of the letter, and I feel like it could be a little stronger against the acting, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments regarding Boarders 295? Anyone else that speaks right now? Same number, commentary, Boarders 295 closed back to the council?
Sorry, I was asking that.
Okay, please. We open.
I apologize, there's quite a crowd out there. I'm Nicole Beulish on Portola Drive, and I want to add remarks comments. I think the optics of the timing of this special meeting look particularly bad, given the election results of Tuesday night. I think the citizens of Delray Oaks have spoken round clear, and I think this is exactly the kind of behavior on the part of our city council that the citizens have disagreed with on Tuesday. I'd like to see you guys really include the mayor, our new mayor, in this process before you make any decisions. Does that really change the course of city council and how it's been operating for the last decade? I thank you for your service as well, but please, listen to your constituents, that's what got you guys in this mess to begin with. Thank you so much.
Any other comments?
I like to get into this little room. Just listening to everybody's input, just if I could plop down in the middle of this room and knew nothing, I would say camp is keep. We've got the holiday, Thanksgiving's coming, Christmas is coming, and then it'll be a new year. Sleep on it. If it's a great idea, and everybody agrees, we can do it in January this year. I don't understand the rush. What's the rush? That's just my major reaction to this meeting tonight.
Any other comments? Same number, all the commentary about this Boarders 295 closed back to the council?
Yes. I personally am very glad that we had this tonight because I won't be on this council very long, and I wanted to get my two cents on it. So I appreciate the fact that we are having a special meeting. I'm sorry to inconvenience people. However, a couple of things. Number one, the ordinances is written, it just enforces what you've already been doing, Mr. Mayor. So these allegations out there that you were doing this to protect some legacy of your heirs are wrong, and I want to emphasize that point. I think this is a fairly well written, there are perhaps some changes that could be made, and realize that we're going to have to figure out a way to resolve disagreements. In the past, you did exactly what this amendment says. You got input from the city council members as to what committees they want for you. We brought that to an open meeting of the city council for voting on it. The city council voted on approving those nominations. So this is just solidifying what has been the practice. The stinking point in here, in my mind, is the, are these words about, what do you do if the council doesn't like the recommendations or the risks that you put in? Now, that's never happened because you did a reasonable process of asking each council member, what committees would you like to serve in? And again, this misconception, if somebody outside the council, I hope we dispel it, could be on one of these committees. There's only one exception, and that's the board of Asian Ways Management District. So I think what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, is recommend, since this doesn't change anything, that in order of the spirit and what has been discussed here tonight, I wanted this on the agenda so that I could have my input before this council goes, before this council, and before I retire from the council. So now I've had my input, I'd recommend that this be delayed until after the new mayor is in, and let the council with the new mayor decide what's already been a practice. And if the new mayor wants to override this, by the way, there was this mention of power. I didn't know you had any power. There is no power associated with these appointments.